Okay, good afternoon. The Committee on Labor and Technology has a 3:00 PM agenda. It's Wednesday, March 12th. We're in conference room 224 Hawaii State Capitol. Okay, this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. The unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:06 PM on March 14th in room 224 and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. There is a one-minute testimony limit, so when you hear a bell, okay, please wrap it up. Thank you. Okay, up first, we have House Bill 202, House Draft 1. This is relating to the adequate reserve fund. A man's the definition of adequate reserve fund for calendar years 2026 and thereafter. Okay. And joining us is Senator Favella. Okay, up first, we have Department of Labor Industrial Relations Director Butai.
Good afternoon, Chair Akino. Senator Favella, I'm Jay Butai, representing Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. Thank you, Vice Chair Lee.
Yes.
You know, I'm, you know, thank you, Chair, for hearing this measure that the department strongly supports. This measure safeguards the health and long-term stability of the unemployment insurance trust fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Up next, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Tom Yamachika on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have HFIA, Lauren Zerbo on Zoom.
Also not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and we have Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. In opposition, any others wishing to testify? House Bill 202. Seeing none, colleagues, any questions? I have a quick question for the department. Thank you, Director, as well as our UI head here. Thank you for joining us. So, Director, we had spoken briefly about this earlier and just wanted to ask, what's the justification for this? And is the timing appropriate, considering everything that's happening right now?
Well, you know, I mean, you know, if you think about it, you know, we've been living in, you know, talk about, you know, 100-year blood or a black swan event like the, you know, the COVID pandemic and then, you know, the Maui wildfires and then, of course, the multitude of challenges, you know, with this new administration where every day is like a new day. I mean, it's, you know, to be honest with you, it's like the deja vu and, you know, during dealing with the pandemic where, you know, we always have to constantly pivot. So, you know, the justification is that we, you know, we have to be mindful of the, you know, solvency of the, you know, the trust fund because, you know, nobody knows what's, you know, what's going to happen in the future. You know, we try to, you know, be responsible and try to see what could go wrong and I think it would be naive for us if we think that, you know, nothing won't. And because, you know, when you, if you look at, you know, prior to the pandemic, I mean, we had, you know, if you look at, you know, the statutory date of calculation, the ending of, the ending of November or December 2019, we had a balance of about 600 million. You know, where our balance now is about 683 million, but, you know, when, you know, that pandemic, you know, that money ran out because at the end of that year, we had a negative 668 million and then we had to, you know, we had to borrow like 706 million. So, you know, you think, you know, we have a healthy balance now, but that, you know, if it's, we have another one of these, you know, unexpected events. You know, the 600 ending balance that we currently have, you know, it's not going to last that long.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator Favella.
How much of this is federal funds? Is this all state?
This is the, this is the trust fund. This is the trust fund. So, it comes from the employer.
Just the employer?
Yes.
So, this is like, is it any kind of business, like that?
Yes.
I guess the concern was that this product was that, it's like, I mean, like everything else right this year, cost of everything, you want to go up because of that. But if there is a minimum wage, anyway, it's not a subject. The reason why I bring this up is because, you know, I guess in 2010, we had a balance negative change for multiple, multi-pillar to some, so why, like, it was, I guess it wasn't correct in the last, I guess, 10 years. Is this part of that, if I could correct, of the, of the department?
Let me bring, and she's our administrator, she would have more.
Yeah, let me read the question better because I'm all over the whole thing anyway. So, to, you know, DLR, 2010, the UCF, UCTF balance was negative impacted by the change in the multi-pillar. So, why nothing was done and 10 years took place?
So, good afternoon, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Lee, and Senator Favella. Thank you for the question. So, in 2010.
Sorry, Anne, for the record, can you just introduce yourself and your role at DLR, please?
My name is Anne Perera Ustakyo, I'm the UI Administrator. In 2010, the legislator took action and changed the adequate reserve percentage from 1.5% to 1% of adequacy. So, initially, when the calculation was formulated, it was determined by those who were working on that calculation, as well as USDOL, that stated that 1.5% would be the amount that would take us through a time such as the pandemic. But in 2010, when it was dropped to 1%, it dropped our adequacy. And so, now we're looking at post-pandemic. We see that if we had kept it at 1.5%, we'd have been, we would have fared the unemployment insurance trust fund levels much better. We wouldn't have had to borrow 700 million from USDOL to pay out benefits and then recalculate that fund balance so that we could continue to survive. And so, we would like to bring it back up to 1.5%. But what happens is, when you bring it up to 1.5%, it doesn't mean the rate's going to be on a high-scale level, which is, we have eight tax schedules, when it starts to stabilize. So, currently, we are at Schedule C. And projections show that if we stay at the same trajectory, we'll continue to stay at Schedule C, even though we bring it up to 1.25 and then eventually to 1.5.
Prior to that, we was okay when it was the 1.5?
Yes, we were okay, of course. We didn't experience a pandemic-like incident, but we would have definitely fared better with the 1.5 adequacy. Also, because of the statute that was passed to remove the anomaly period for the pandemic, we know that we're not overly charging employers using that pandemic period high unemployment insurance rates.
So, during the pandemic, I know I had to witness high volume of fraud. Did we ever recover any of that?
We did, we recovered, we have recovered some. We've also had court cases to help us recover fraud as well. And we've implemented lots of different fraud tools to help us combat fraud moving forward.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the next measure. Okay, House Bill 477, House Draft 1, relating to the Hawaii employment security law. Okay, up first, we have Department of Labor Industrial Relations Director.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Senator Favella. Jay Butai for DLR. Thank you, Chair, for hearing this measure that the department strongly supports. This measure supports the modernization of the UI system while also improving services. And, you know, we're respectfully requesting amendments to clarify the intent of the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. Up next, we have YOPAT, District Council 50, Jeffrey Matasugu. In support, any others wishing to testify? Okay, House Bill 477, House Draft 1. Okay, seeing none, any questions, colleagues? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1026, House Draft 1. This is Making Emergency Appropriations for Public Employment Cost Items. Okay, we have BNF Director in support. We have UH Hawaii, UH System, Calvert Young. Okay, we have United Public Workers.
Well, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Lee, Senator Favella, Kamaka Kamala, Government Affairs Manager for United Public Workers. Do you have our testimony in strong support of this bill? And in the interest of time, we will also stand on our testimony support for 1027 as well as 1036. Thank you.
I apologize, we do have UH in the House. Yeah, I was just looking for Calvert.
Sorry.
Not Mr. Ing, yeah, but go ahead.
Aloha, Senators, Michael Ing from the University of Hawaii. UH stands on its testimony in support of this measure, 1026. We also stand on our support for 1027, 1028, 1029, 1030, 1033, 1034, 1035, and 1036.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have HGA.
Chair, Vice Chair Member, Nui Sebastian with HGA. I will stand on our testimony in support. We'll also stand on our testimony in support for the various other cost item measures that we submitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Evertrue, HHSC. Also in support, any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1027, House Draft 1. Okay, this is for Collective Bargaining Unit 1. We have testimony in support from BNF Director, as well as UH, United Public Workers, and HHSC. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1028, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 2. Okay, again, it's going to sound like a broken record, but please bear with me. Okay, it's like this. Okay, again, we have BNF Director, UH, HGA, and HHSC, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1029, House Draft 1. This is Collective Bargaining for Unit 3. Okay, again, Budget and Finance Director, UH, HGA, and HHSC, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, members' questions? Moving on to the next measure, House Bill 1030, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 4. BNF Director, UH, excuse me, HGA, and HHSC, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, questions? Seeing none, let's move on to House Bill 1031, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 5. First, we have BNF Director in support and we have HST, also in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1032, Collective Bargaining for Unit 6. Okay, up first, we have BNF Director and HGA, both in support. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions? Seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1033, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 7. We have UH in support and BNF Director also in support, as well as UPA. Thank you very much, in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions? Seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1034, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 8. Okay, we have BNF Director in support, UH, as well as HGA. Again, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, any questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to House Bill 1035, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 9. Okay, we have BNF Director, UH System, HGA, and HHSC, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1036, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 10. Okay, we have BNF Director, UH, and United Public Workers, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Excuse me, we also have testimony from HHSC in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 1037, Collective Bargaining for Unit 11. Testimony in support from BNF Director, any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1038, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 13. Okay, we have BNF Director in support, HGA in support. We have HHSC in support and our Brian Ravel in opposition. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Members, colleagues, seeing none. Moving on to the very last measure, House Bill 1039, House Draft 1, Collective Bargaining for Unit 14. We have BNS Director in support and HGA in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, we're going to roll right into decision-making. Okay, and promptly after this, we're going to go straight into our 301 decision-making-only agenda. Okay, so please don't leave. Thank you very much, colleagues. Okay, up first, we have House Bill 202, House Draft 1, relating to the adequate reserve fund. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1. Okay, with some technical amendments and defective date, we're going to also add in the committee report, there are some concerns regarding impact to businesses, but I believe that DLR had mentioned that the schedules will probably remain the same even after the enactment of this bill. Okay, but we're still going to include that in the committee report, okay? Any questions or concerns, colleagues? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovo.
Voting on House Bill 202, HD1, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Akino?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Ihara?
Aye.
Senator Murawaki excused and Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to House Bill 477, House Draft 1, relating to the Hawaii employment security law. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with some technical amendments. We're going to defect the date to July 1st, 2050. We're going to take the amendments requested by Department of Labor Industrial Relations regarding register for work or registration for work, those definitions, amendments requested. Okay, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on House Bill 477, HD1, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any other reservations or no's? If not, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so for the remaining agenda, okay, we're going to take it up on one vote. Okay, so, House Bill 1026, these are all the collective bargaining bills, as well as the emergency appropriation bill. So, from House Bill 1026, House Draft 1, House Bill 1027, House Draft 1, House Bill 1028, House Draft 1, House Bill 1029, House Draft 1, House Bill 1030, House Draft 1, House Bill 1031, House Draft 1, HB 1032, House Draft 1, House Bill 1033, House Draft 1, House Bill 1034, House Draft 1, House Bill 1035, House Draft 1, House Bill 1036, House Draft 1, House Bill 1037, House Draft 1, House Bill 1038, House Draft 1, and House Bill 1039, House Draft 1. Recommendation, colleagues, is to move this as a Senate Draft 1. We're going to be defecting the defective date once more to July 1st, 2050 for further discussion. Okay, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Thank you, voting on House Bills altogether in one motion, 1026, House Draft 1 through, oh, House Bill 1026, 1027, 1028, 1029, 1030, 1031, 1032, 1033, 1034, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39. All House Drafts 1. Recommendation is to pass all of them with amendments, speeding Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any other reservations or no's? If not, said measures are adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes our 3:00 PM agenda. IT, can we go in for the 301? Okay, Committee on Labor and Technology convening our 301 decision-making-only agenda. It is still Wednesday, March 12th. We're still in room 224 Hawaii State Capitol. These bills were previously heard on Monday, March 10th, in the same conference room at 3:00 PM. Okay, up first, we have House Bill 423, House Draft 2, relating to workers' compensation. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with a defective date of July 1st, 2050, some technical amendments. And we're also going to be taking D-Herd's amendments to amend verbiage on page 7, lines 12 to 18. It should say that a provider shall file employee's plan with the approval of the employee no later than 90 days after the provider submits an initial evaluation report unless the employer, provider, and injured worker agree to an extension of that deadline to a specific date by which the vocational plan must be completed. Upon receipt of the plan from the provider, an employee shall have 10 days to review and sign the plan. A plan shall be submitted to the employer and the employee and filed with the Director of D-Herd within two days from the date of the employee's signature. A plan shall include a statement of the feasibility of the vocational goal in using the process of, and so on and so forth, that's in the current measure. So, that's the recommendation. Colleagues, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovo.
Voting on House Bill 423, HD2, recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? If not, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. Moving on to House Bill 480, House Draft 1, again, relating to workers' compensation. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with some technical amendments and a new defective date of July 1st, 2050. Okay, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovo.
Voting on House Bill 480, House Draft 1, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to House Bill 162, House Draft 2, relating to collective bargaining. This would authorize the Labor Relations Board to request the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service to furnish a list of five qualified and experienced interest arbitrators in the event the parties fail to select the neutral third member of the arbitration panel. Clarifies that this is another organization that the HLRB can select from and not just the AMA, American Arbitration, AA, American Arbitration Association. Okay, so, members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with some technical amendments and a new defective date of July 1st, 2050. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovo, please.
Voting on House Bill 162, House Draft 2, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Okay, moving on to House Bill 164, relating to indebtedness to the state. Okay, members, the recommendation of this bill is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with some technical amendments, a defective date of July 1st, 2050, and we're also going to be taking HGA's amendments. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovo.
Voting on House Bill 164, HD1, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to House Bill 1152, relating to tax administration. Okay, members, the recommendation for House Bill 1152, House Draft 1, is to move this as a Senate Draft 1, again, with technical amendments and a new defective date of July 1st, 2050. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on House Bill 1152, House Draft 1, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Murawaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to House Bill 214, House Draft 1, related to government. Okay, for this one, colleagues, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft 1 with some technical amendments, new defective date of July 1st, 2050. Also going to be taking AG's amendments, okay, on page 6, lines 10 to 11, to cross-reference to the portion of the bill addressing school resource officers. Should it be deemed appropriate? In addition to that, we're going to be replacing the text on page 1, lines 8 through 11, with the following, "The legislature further finds that there is a labor shortage that makes it difficult to fill investigative positions in the Department of the Attorney General and Law Enforcement Officer positions that can be stationed at public schools as school resource officers." In addition to that, on page 4, line 15, replace as a school resource officer with as a law enforcement officer. We're also going to be adding new sub-paragraphs to Section 88-9, subsection D, subsection 6, by making the following revisions, on page 5, line 4, delete and, page 5, line 9, replace or with, and, and we're also going to be adding a new sub-paragraph D on page 5, line 9, to read as the retirement will be stationed at a public school as a resource officer. Any questions or concerns, members?
Yeah, so, this is, this is a law enforcement that retired, is that what you mean?
Yes.
To be resource officers at the school?
Yes, that's, that's a possibility should this measure pass, but there are further concerns regarding this bill. But we feel that due to the number of vacancies and the difficulties to get people filled in these positions, trained up, that we would like to continue to have this bill moving forward for further discussion.
Just, just, I, I wasn't here for this, I apologize. What I, what I had suggested prior to this, we have school resource officers. When I talked to law enforcement, creation of law enforcement, what had happened was, we wanted to have, when, when I discussed this, we wanted to have, at the time, with sheriffs before law enforcement at every elementary school, and we understand the shortage, but ideal was since law enforcement came in, Chair, to train the physical and able resource officers that we have at the school to come back to the school, especially to the community that they represent, to have a higher increase in pay and, you know, maybe, of course, a different unit, right? And have an opportunity to serve that way because right now, we get these, these officers that are going to retire, we'll take nothing away from them and understand the shortage. But how can we have our community school resource officers that been there that have an opportunity to move up and now we get law enforcement, because they told me that they're willing to train them, go to the training, get certified and everything, and they leave school as a resource officer and coming back as law enforcement to help with the shortage that we have. So, I, I know I wasn't here for that discussion, but that's something that I would like to put in a note if anything going forward with this bill.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. No, very much welcome. Any other questions? No, very much welcome. Any other questions or concerns or comments, colleagues? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill two fourteen, H D one, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Moriwaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none. The recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to the next measure. House Bill eight seventy-four, House Draft Three, relating to child performers. This amends the Uniform Custodial Trust Act to specify that for a minor in theatrical employment with a gross income of at least five thousand on a project or twenty thousand in a calendar year, a parent or legal guardian of the minor is required to establish a trust account for the minor with an independent third-party trustee, and the employer of the minor is required to deposit a portion of the minor's earnings into the trust account until the minor becomes an adult. Okay, and it also makes misappropriation or fraudulent use of funds within the trust account a breach of fiduciary duty, subject to certain penalties. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft One. We're going to add some technical amendments with a defective date of July first, two thousand and fifty. In addition to that, we're going to be placing the responsibility of this particular portion of the bill to be overseen by the Department of Labor Industrial Relations, specifically the Wage Standards Division, which already oversees a lot of our child labor laws and regulations. Okay? Any questions or concerns, colleagues? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill eight seven four, House Draft Three, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Moriwaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none. The recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. And moving on to the very last measure, House Bill one fifty-nine, House Draft One, related to qualified community rehabilitation programs. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate Draft One with some technical amendments. We're going to, again, change the defective date to July first, two thousand and fifty, and we're also going to blank the eight hundred fifty thousand dollar cap at the moment for further discussion. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill one fifty-nine, House Draft One, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Senator Moriwaki excused. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none. The recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Thank you.